Two minutes past the hour, so let's jump into lighting for apartment buildings sponsored by the city of Rye. And I'll just move to the next screen. These are some of the things that we're going to be covering in the next thirty minutes. We'll be looking at sustainability in apartment buildings, how lighting forms a part of sustainability. The opportunity for our residential apartment blocks, we'll be going through four different lighting areas in our apartment buildings and looking at some new innovation in lighting. And finally, we'll have some time for questions. So on the screen, we've got a diagram of an apartment block. Now sustainability can mean a number of things. It can refer to energy, water and waste measures. It can also refer to new innovations like solar batteries and electric vehicle charging. There are three hundred and forty thousand apartment blocks in Australia. According to the recent STRATA Insights report, National STRATA Insights Report, there are fifteen percent of Australian households now living inside apartment buildings. And the insured value of these buildings is one point one trillion dollars. So we're definitely living in an asset that is a considerable asset that needs a lot of care, a lot of maintenance. And there's a great opportunity for improving sustainability inside these apartment buildings where we live. So why might you upgrade lighting in apartment buildings? Well, first of all, there's a great opportunity to save power. And just to give you a little bit of an insight, for example, if you were living in a typical apartment block of say forty units in the suburbs and you today you have fluorescent lighting in the basement car park and the fire stairs, some garden lights and in the foyer's and you converted that all over to LED motion sensor lighting, you might actually save sixty percent of your common area electricity bill. So just to give you a real number, an apartment block of say forty units, its common area electricity bill could decrease from twenty four thousand dollars a year down to about six thousand dollars a year, just through retrofitting every light in the building to be motion sensor LED lighting. And this reflects in lower bills which are paid by the the STRATA body. Today, we'll use the words owners corporation and body corporate interchangeably. And when you've got lower bills, that gives you the opportunity to or your STRATA committee, the opportunity to either lower STRATA levies or build up that capital works fund that can be used for future projects to improve the amenity of the apartment building. Now, finally, and this is why Liz from Rye's sponsoring this webinar today, we can reduce carbon emissions significantly in the apartment blocks. And while some people think that apartment blocks are less carbon intensive than residential houses, that's not actually the case. As you get into larger apartment blocks, the carbon emissions per person are actually greater than in residential houses. So what are some of the barriers to improving our lighting in STRATA? First of all, according to that National STRATA Insights report, forty eight percent of all the units in those three hundred and forty thousand apartment buildings across Australia are rented out. So owner investors have a different view of the building from the owner occupiers. The owner investors are less inclined to improve the amenity in the block as they're just focused on the financial return. But the great thing about LED lighting upgrades is the payback is so fast that this is something that can actually break through split incentives between owner investors and owner occupiers. Some LED lighting retrofit projects will actually pay themselves off under a year, maybe under one and a half years. And owner investors will be getting a return on on that and will feel that they're part of this journey. So other challenges we've got communication between STRATA manager and STRATA committees, between STRATA committees and residents in the block. Also, larger blocks might have a facilities manager as well. So this is a challenge to coordinate inside our STRATA buildings. There has been a challenge with apathy in these blocks and and sometimes it just takes someone to take a little bit of leadership, a little bit of initiative, maybe join the committee if they haven't joined the committee before and start promoting projects such as lighting upgrades in the building. There has been a lack of information and that's what this webinar series, which is sponsored by Rye City Council is all about. This week, we're doing lighting in the coming weeks, same time on Tuesday nights, we've got solar ventilation and hot water for apartment buildings. So make sure you join us for those as well. Another barrier has been access to finance for STRATA buildings, particularly those that might have low admin and low capital works funds. And the other consideration is saving power, but not to the extent of making it unsafe to move around the building. So for example, you don't want your car park to be pitch dark. You don't want your fire escapes to be pitch black from a safe movement perspective. So we'll just jump into a case study. This was the building that was featured on the front page and it's a green building located here in Rye City Council down in Meadowbank. From the aerial shot, you can actually see that this building has thirty kilowatts of solar panels on the roof. But they've also reduced their consumption inside this apartment block through the use of motion sensor LED lighting in the car park, the fire stairs, the foyer's and the lift lobbies. So during the day, this building is actually powering the lights in the common areas from the solar system as well as feeding solar power into each of the individual apartments if all the solar energy is not used by the common areas. And they've got efficient lighting and we'll talk a little bit more about how to design a lighting LED lighting solution for a building such as this later on. But just to keep in mind that this is a building that should be something that other buildings in Rye area aspire to. They're also famous for having solar powered electric vehicle chargers in the basement car park. So it's the combination of all these items that creates a sustainable, environmentally friendly, low carbon building that's, you know, the equivalent of planting hundreds of trees every year as opposed to the apartment blocks that you see next to it moving down towards the water. So today, we're going to look at four different areas where lighting can be upgraded in apartment blocks. We're going to look at the car park, the foyer's, garbage rooms and garbage chutes and fire stairs. Now, these are not the only places that you have lighting in an apartment block. You'll also find it in plant rooms, pool gym, leisure areas and external garden locations as well. But let's jump in and start with the car park area. So many of our car parks are one or two levels. If we think about the lighting that you've got throughout these areas, you've got lighting on entry and exit ramps, you've got lighting behind car parking spaces, you've got green running man exit lights near the fire stair walls, which allow you to maybe exit up to street level in an emergency. You may have a loading bay, a car wash bay. And sometimes the lifts from the building enter into the car park area and you might have a different style of lighting right outside that lift entry. So what people started doing over the last five years, people have been doing LED lighting upgrades in car park areas. If your building's already done, was an early adopter five years ago and did LED retrofit tubes, you can still save another fifteen percent on electricity by now doing a motion sensor LED lighting retrofit and actually getting rid of the old fittings entirely. So there was a cheap LED retrofit tubes that looked like fluorescent tubes that could be slotted into existing fluorescent fittings. That was done over the last five years and even buildings that did that, it's possible to save a lot more money by now entirely pulling down those fittings and putting in the most recent LED lighting. So what we've seen is in each consecutive year, the power consumption of the lights has gone down. Now, one of the things we noticed in car park areas was to really save energy, people were putting four foot or twelve hundred millimeter battens down the thoroughfares where the cars drive. And then they started putting two foot or six hundred millimeter battens over the car spaces where people actually park. Now, let's just think through the use case of coming home from Coles, Woolworths or Audi and reversing into your your car parking spot, opening the boot and getting your shopping out. So this is an area where you do want the light to be able to see the items in the back of the car. Now, when people were trying to save energy by using two foot lights over the car spaces, the light wasn't spreading as far to the back. And a recent innovation that's, you know, just come out in this this last year is a four foot or twelve hundred millimeter batten line that actually has a half power mode. And by that, I mean, only every second LED dot can be eliminated with a little dip switch setting on that line. And the benefit of a four foot or twelve hundred millimeter motion sensor LED batten line is it spreads the light further while only consuming the same amount of power as the equivalent two foot light. And the benefit of this is it gets that light further to the back of where you might be getting the shopping out of the car. Now, we measured the the intensity of the light in what's called lux in and in a car park area, you need about forty lux as a background level uniformly throughout the car parking area. That's when motion sensor lights are brought up to their full strength. When no one's around, you can drop have the motion sensor lights drop down to ten or twenty percent power. When people are present, you need that uniform forty lux. And we'll talk a little bit more around lux later on, but there are a couple of things that you can do here. There are free apps which you can download onto your mobile phone. A couple of examples of them are Lux Camera, Galactica and Lux Light Meter Pro. And these are free apps. You can walk through the car park area and it'll tell you whether the 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 lighting is sufficient, it's meeting that that standard in your car park area. Some people think about the the lift entrances into the car parking area and they might say, well, we don't want a motion sensor light next to the lift entry. But the the sensitivity of the motion sensors has also improved in the last few years. And we now with microwave sensors which might detect people up to eight meters away. And they also come on a little bit more smoothly than say the infrared sensors that we we knew from thirty years ago. So, you know, even a light that's directly outside the lift at an entry point into the car park can still be a motion sensor light and and people will usually adapt to that. Another thing is people ask about safety in the car park area and motion sensor lighting in the car park is actually safer than lights that are on all the time because if anyone moves, they can't fool the motion sensor that light will come on. And so you'll know if someone's moving close to you or in a nearby part of the of the car park. So, you know, the other thing to think about is you need a mix of emergency battery backed up lights in a car park area that would meet your ninety minute test if power was dropped to the building. That has to be tested once a year during your annual fire compliance inspection. So you get your fire compliance certificate. And so typically, when you're doing the thoroughfares through the car parking space, every second light or maybe every third light will have that emergency battery in it. It's better to have a lithium ion battery rather than a NiCad battery. It's better for the environment and also the warranty is longer. You'll get a two year warranty on lithium ion batteries. Another thing to keep in mind is if fire compliance people come through, do the testing and one of your lights fails, you don't need to necessarily replace the whole light. They might quote you on doing that. It's quite often you can buy a battery for a lithium ion battery for forty dollars. Electrician just installs it into that emergency battery backed up light and you can save a lot on your fire compliance tests. Here's an example of a lux meter that you can buy from your local electronics store. It's a little bit more accurate than the smartphone apps that I mentioned earlier on. Okay, so let's move into the foyer areas. Now, in terms of the order that you would do LED or motion sensor LED lighting upgrades in an apartment building, I'd usually recommend leaving the foyer's till the end out of the four sections that we're looking at today in the building. Foyers are the areas that have the most amenity considerations that have to go into the lighting and and there's a design aspect to it as well. But a couple of things, we'll just talk through what what you might have in the foyer's of your apartment buildings. So quite often, people will still have fittings in the roof that have the CFLs. They're the twirly compact fluorescent lights that you buy, used to buy from the supermarket. And sometimes you'll have a fitting which has two of those in the foyer areas. Now, they're hideously inefficient. They can be replaced with a, say, a six and a half inch cutout LED light. Typically, people aren't doing motion sensor LED downlights. But the thing to look for with LED downlights, which you might install into foyer's is you can now get tri-color downlights. And that's gives you the ability to switch it from, say, a warm sunshine like color through to the cooler lighting style. So that's measured in Kelvins. Three thousand Kelvin is your warmer lighting and six thousand is your cool clinical hospital grade style lighting. So sometimes for the foyer areas, you want the warmer lighting. You still need your emergency battery backed up lights in these areas. You also will have your green running man exit lights in the foyer's. As you move through the different lift lobbies going through the building, some older buildings used to have Spitfire, a little red dot style light that would only come on in the event of an emergency. Some even older buildings have what were called emergency non-maintained lights, square box that just sat there all the time, waiting for power to drop before it would come on. With the move to motion sensor LED lighting, those older blocks are mainly getting rid of those emergency non-maintained lights now. So there's some of the considerations to think about when upgrading the foyer's. Also, you can see some lifts here. We were just speaking to an apartment building that actually had a former CEO of the lift company and he was saying the new lifts actually dim down the lights inside the lift when no one's inside the lift. And that's a lot of the time the lights are running in the lifts, twenty four hours a day. So it's difficult though to coordinate upgrading of lighting in the lift because that usually comes under your lift maintenance contract and you actually have to ask the lifties to do that lighting upgrade. Okay, we're going to move on to garbage chute and garbage room lighting. And this is the dirtiest that this presentation will get. Now, the use case that we'll talk about here, our STRATA buildings have plenty of waste areas that look just like this one. I'm sure that you've seen signs in this area that say, please turn off the light when when you move away from the garbage area. But invariably, people ignore the signs and these lights get left on all the time. So this is a great area to use motion sensor LED lighting. If you think about it, people are coming garbage in one hand, they're going to use the other hand to lift the lid of the bin. So you actually, and particularly with coronavirus, people are more sensitive about turning light switches. Now's a great time to decommission that light switch and move to a motion sensor LED light in this area. One of the things that you can do is dim these lights down to nothing when no one's around because you don't have to meet safe movement in this area the same way you would have to in, say, a fire escape. So also, if you're in a multi-level apartment block and you've got garbage chutes and you've got little doors that go to the hatches on each level, think about the lighting that you've got in there. Sometimes that's running twenty four hours a day. It may not, we have noticed sometimes that if you've got an extraction fan in that small enclosed space, it can create a disturbance that is picked up by the motion sensor of a motion sensor light. So maybe, you know, just be cognizant that the motion sensor might get triggered by an extraction fan in that garbage chute room and you might not get as many savings. But still a great area to be to be upgraded because the lighting is usually running all the time. Okay, the fire stairs. In apartment buildings where these are not trafficked frequently, this represents the lowest hanging fruit. It's the section where you should immediately do your motion sensitivity lighting upgrade first before any other area of the building. And the reason for that is that when you've got a fire stairs that's low trafficked and for example, you move from twin fluorescent lights, which are on twenty four hours a day, to motion sensor LED lighting, maybe just two foot lights in the fire escape. And keep in mind, you only need a battery backed up light at the landings. So on the split levels, you can get get away with an emotion sensibility light that doesn't have the battery pack. For that fire escape as a project on its own, you can get up to ninety percent savings on energy and you can get a payback in under one year on upgrading a fire escape at current prices in the market. So if you're a larger building and you can qualify for the New South Wales Energy Saving Scheme, which is a rebate scheme, which we'd recommend you look into if you've got more than, say, eighty or a hundred lights to be upgraded in your common areas, you'll get even more faster return on investment in the fire stairs area. So another thing that we find, there's a lot of our heritage three story walk up apartment blocks in Australia. The red brick, it's part of our STRATA environment. In fact, it's the most common building, the red bricks and the white brick walk ups. These are the most populous STRATA and apartment buildings in Australia. And now everyone's been into these older style apartment blocks that have these pneumatic push buttons to turn on the lights on the ground floor, the the first floor and the second floor at the same time. And whenever anyone comes out on their floor and hits the push button, all three lights go on at the same time. Well, it doesn't have to be that way anymore. A project, you can get your electrician in, get him to remove the pneumatic push buttons, put some metal plates like this over the top of them and upgrade the lights in the on each floor with a motion sensor LED light. Now, particularly at this time of coronavirus where people don't want to be touching buttons, you're coming home, shopping into hands. If I'm only going to the first floor, I only need the ground floor light and the first floor light to go on. I don't need the second floor light to come on because I'm not actually going to go up to the second floor. So that's the benefit of of moving away from, you know, this pneumatic push button, which has been a staple in our older style apartment buildings and moving to the new lighting technology. Another thing we should just mention, back in the early noughties, the nineties and the noughties, quite often fluorescent lights were in banks on a circuit in the car park area and there was one motion sensor, one of those infrared motion sensors that would bring on the whole bank of lights in one hit, keep it on for, you know, a minute or two and then it would drop off. Now, this actually turned out to be a disaster in terms of maintenance costs because that was blowing fluorescent tubes regularly. If you've got this sort of setup in your car park, we would recommend that you actually now decommission the sensor banks system, the circuit, and just move to individual motion sensors on each light in the car park. That's a higher resolution model, which will give you higher energy savings over the long term. So another thing that we'll say goodbye to today is the car park sensor bank. Now, we do have to talk about compliance and this is AS sixteen eighty, car park entry and exit is one area that's not done well in our apartment buildings. And I'll just walk you through the scenario behind this. So you can see a diagram here. At any car park entry or exit, it's actually the most dangerous place as a driver comes out of the dark car park into the bright sunlight, where they may hit a pedestrian or a child on a bike riding past that as the garage door gate goes up and they exit the building. So this is a national standard. Basically, we spoke about lux earlier on and during the day, from the outside coming in, you actually need eight hundred lux for the first fifteen meters of the the car park entrance and then a hundred and sixty lux for the next four meters during the day to meet this compliance standard. And that's a transition zone to allow the driver's eyes to move from the bright driving condition outside into the darker area. Now, at nighttime, the the standard is you need a hundred and sixty lux for the first nineteen meters as you enter or exit. Now, there are specific solutions that can be bought that have a PE cell, a photoelectric cell that sits outside and connects to a wireless network, a communication network between the lights in the zone and meets the this government requirement. Invariably, we find a lot of STRATA buildings haven't done this project. If you want to go and get your New South Wales Energy Saving Scheme rebates on a lighting project, it's mandatory to do this at the car park entrance. It adds more expense to the project, but I'm just going to give you a little tip to try and get this passed through your STRATA committee. And it goes like this. Heaps of STRATA buildings around Australia have the curtain roller doors that go up and down for the cars to enter and exit the building. Now, quite often, the buildings are having cars hit these curtains, maybe once a year, once every two years and getting a bill for two, three, four thousand dollars each time to repair the damaged roller door. Now, if you had better lighting in that area coming up to the roller door, you would actually reduce the amount of times that you're going to damage the roller door. And the business case for doing this compliance project is actually not about saving money in in that in lower power. And the business case for doing this compliance project is actually not about saving money in, in that, in lower power. It's about saving on the number of times that a car drives into that roller door. In my own building, an NRMA vehicle did it and hit, that was helping someone inside the basement car park. And, and the NRMA vehicle even took out the garage door on the way out. So even the best drivers have this problem. So that's AS 1680 compliance. Now, for something that's at more the cutting edge, we'll talk about a wireless emergency lighting network for your apartment building. Now, imagine all the emergency lights inside your apartment building in the fire stairs, in the basement car park, connected through a radio network so that they can communicate to each other. And then that radio network connected to the internet so that someone can actually look at a mobile phone app or a webpage and do an instant emergency lighting test for the entire building without having to walk around. Now, a couple of innovations that are in this particular space include one of the challenges in basement car parks with motion sensors was the motion sensors didn't trigger fast enough for cars. So basically cars would drive past the light before the motion sensor would activate and the light would flare up. With one of these wireless networks, the first light in a series detects the car coming and radios ahead to the lights that are further up the thoroughfare and brings them up to full strength before the car drives through. So that's one use of what people are calling the internet of light. I'll give you another scenario. If you're in the fire escape and you're entering the fire escape on the fourth floor, the light on the fourth floor can radio to the light on the third floor and the fifth floor and tell them to both brighten it up to full strength. And that's called dynamic branch prediction. At that point, the, the lighting network doesn't know whether you're going to walk up or down, but it's just brightening both lights. Assuming that you go to either one of them. And from, after you've made that decision, it'll keep going up the chain, you know, illuminating lights before you get to it. So that's something that's a little bit more on the, the cutting edge. This has been installed into apartment buildings, but it's not prevalent. So it's, you know, some leader strata buildings have installed this type of network, but many more will in the future. And for outdoor lighting, we'll just have a little chat about the combination of a daylight sensor and a motion sensor put together. So in the past, we used to have these photoelectric cells. You can see one on the diagram here from HPM, PE 170 series. And that would trigger a circuit of lights to come on when dusk, you know, approached at dawn, it would have triggered the lights to go off. Now, the trend is now away from these because lights can have their own daylight sensor onboard. And so the combination of a daylight sensor with a motion sensibility light will mean that that light won't illuminate at all during the day. When dusk arrives, that light will come on to its low power 20% mode. And then when it detects someone walking towards it, it will flare up to 100% power, maybe for a minute and a half before then dropping back down to its low power mode throughout the night. And then when dawn comes again, that light will be completely off for the rest of the day. So that's an example where the things that used to be components such as a infrared sensor or a photoelectric cell have all been shrunk and miniaturized and put into the individual lighting units now. So, and that gives you more flexibility in designing a solution. So hopefully you've picked up something through this lighting for apartment buildings session. Now, I'll just pass over to Liz from City of Ride. And she'll just tell you about a couple of other sustainability initiatives that Ride Council has coming up. And then after that, we'll have a look at some questions.
Okay. Thanks Brent. First of all, I'd just like to thank Brent for sharing all his expertise and experience with us. And thanks everyone who, who's joined us tonight in this first of series of webinars for apartment energy efficiency. We're really excited to be working with apartments. In City of Ride, you may not be aware, but 51% of our households do live in apartments. And so there's enormous, enormous potential for energy saving, not only in individual apartments, but across common areas. So we do have a couple of other programs available to residents in Ride, which you may be interested in, which, which are helping to build sustainable communities and reduce environmental footprints around apartment residents. First of those is our Common Ground. We're about to launch our 2020 program in a couple of weeks. It's an apartment, it's apartment program available to all residents in Ride, tenants and owners. And we select five, five successful applicants to have a free food garden bed installed in their apartment. And you also get food gardening workshops with that. We also, as part of that program, you do become eligible for a common area energy and water assessment and solar and solar assessment. So that might be another avenue for incorporating some of these ideas that Brent's presented tonight. We also have in City of Ride, our Home Waste and Sustainability Advisory Service, which all owners and tenants are able to participate in. And through that service, you can have a free energy, water and waste assessment of your apartment. And you'll receive a free tailored report with strategies for reducing your energy, water and waste and improving the comfort of your home. Just to give you an example, last year, participants in the program reported saving over $500 a year on the electricity bill and over $35 on their water bill. So really good opportunity to make some personal savings in your own home through that program. So warmly welcome you to participate and join up to those programs. I will send out details of those programs after this webinar tonight, along with my contact details. So please feel free to contact me if you would like to discuss either of those programs. And certainly encourage you to join us over the next few weeks on Tuesday evening for the, for the next few webinars that Brent will be presenting for us. So yep, over to you Brent. We do have a few questions, a couple of questions that have come up.
Okay, I can see what are the names of the lux apps you mentioned, so I'll just go over them again. Lux Camera was one of them. Another one was called Galactica Lux Meter. And another one is Lux Light Meter Pro. I think they, they have a free trial mode on some of those that lets you take it down into your fire stairs or basement car park and test that out and just see, are you making your 40 lux? And also go up to the, the garage door area and are you hitting 800 lux during the daytime? And 160 lux at night time? So that's, yep, that's one. I'm just having a look. Another question, we have a three-level 18-unit 50-year-old building with two stairwells. Electricity is used for lighting only and currently costs about 200 per quarter. So for Paul, I would say, yes, you will, you should actually do this project. I'm, I'm not sure whether you've got the lights on all the time or whether they're on the pneumatic push button for you. But small buildings like this can still run a project and, and make a saving. And, but also pitch the amenity, the convenience. If you do, if you're able to get rid of those pneumatic push buttons, that you don't have to be pushing them. But it will, it'll take longer to get a payback in a smaller apartment complex like that. You know, you'll, you'll be looking at a, a three or four year, but the lighting now comes with five to seven year warranty. So you'll, you'll make back, the savings will pay for it over, over the warranty period of the lights. From Vicky, are we able to obtain a copy of the slides? We're recording the webinar, so we'll provide that through to Liz and she can provide the webinar afterwards. Melissa, any companies that perform these LED upgrades? Yep, I'll give you a bunch of companies that we've seen. Enlighten is an Australian company that has Australian design lights. For the emergency wireless system that I spoke about, the innovator in that area is called WBS Lighting. Some other companies that do, this is called The Green Guys. Couple more would be Tracky. There's, look, there's, in your, in your local area around city, Pro Energy, there's a whole bunch. So you know, there's, or if you've got a good electrician, you can just, that you're happy with, you can actually get your electrician just to do the job. Yep, so a question on the, on the PowerPoint, as I said, we're recording the webinar. And where do you get good quality motion sensor LED lights? Look at some, it's important to know that there's different quality. You, you get what you pay for in LED lighting. So one thing, and I know this is very hard for a strata committee to digest, but if you want to go out and get three quotes in LED lighting, sometimes you should actually not take the cheapest quote. And that's just because the quality of the components, in particular the drivers are likely to fail on the cheaper quality lights. And the motion sensors are not as good on the cheap quality lights. Like sometimes you, you can actually walk right under a light and, and it still hasn't like detected you. So that what you're getting in a better quality light is a better quality driver, a better quality battery and a better quality motion sensor. And, and also the extra bells and whistles, which might be daylight sensors, half-power nodes, et cetera. So at the top of the, the range, there's something called the Chameleon Light from Enlighten. And that's, that's got every conceivable function on it that you could have in a light in a car park or fire escape, including mobile phone control setting of the brightness of the light and, you know, mobile phone app to configure each light individually. So that's the, the sort of range that you've got in the market. But there is a cheap Chinese manufactured product that makes its way into Australia and you don't get as good lifespan out of that. With another question, we've got an embedded network, so we want to try and work out the benefits. Do you have any recommendations on embedded networks? Embedded networks, probably best for you to come back on the solar talk. And we might touch on, on embedded networks. The, the building which I showed on the front cover of this presentation, the Genesis Building at 133 Bowden Street in Meadowbank does have an embedded electrical network as well as the solar panels, solar power to be charging, et cetera. But it's, it's almost a topic of its own that you can't really cover in LED lighting session. Any other questions? How much does strata managers know about this sort of stuff or are we on our own? Okay, I would just say here, there are some good strata managers that have done it and will proactively lead a strata committee through the process. For a big strata building, you might want to hire a consultant to run a tender and compare the quotes from three different LED lighting companies for your committee. And we wouldn't expect a strata manager to go into that level of detail. But we've come across some good strata managers who've, who've done it in a bunch of buildings. And then they've actually helped the committees down the line, get through some of the early learning curves and avoid some of the pitfalls. Okay, another question here about IOT features, that's Internet of Things features. I do, the reason, I mentioned that internet of light, like WBS Lighting was one of the companies that's gone into that area. Enlighten also have an IAT car park entry system with a wireless self-healing mesh of lights. That's a bit of a mouthful, a wireless self-healing mesh of lights that communicate with, with each other. All, all these technologies are bringing benefits. You, you will actually have lights in the future that are detecting mobile phones in people's pockets and purses in the vicinity as an occupancy sensor. And the other thing that is just on the, the fringe is using the, the wireless lighting network to communicate other information through the building, which may be humidity sensors and other types of sensors as well. Is there any government rebate for apartment lighting upgrade for car parks, stair area and common area? Yes, there is, that's the New South Wales Energy Saving Scheme. It, it's referred to as ESCs or Energy Saving Certificates. They're, they're a tradable commodity on a marketplace. So you use a company called an ACP or Accredited Certificate Provider to trade those certificates and get your rebate. Obviously, that just gets bundled in with the project manager or the electrician or electrical contractor that does the upgrade usually for you. There's another program, New South Wales Home Energy Efficiency Rebate or HEER program. This can apply if you've got 10 or more halogen downlights in your apartment or 10 or more halogen downlights in the foyer areas. You can qualify for the HEER rebate program. So that's another one to keep in mind. Is now a good time to upgrade or will there be some future developments that mean waiting for 12 months would be better? You can't really ever get ahead of the curve. The reason to jump in right now is by not procrastinating and not delaying, you're getting energy savings from the day the new lights hit the ground. And it's, the strata committees should actually be thinking, well, we buy lights every five years, we just turn the, the lights over in the building, get the new technology and get the savings. Because on each technology refresh, you've got the best technology back into the building and it's paying itself off again. So that's what, you know, we're seeing people ripping out the first generation LED lights, putting in the second generation because they know they can get payback on that now. So yeah, by waiting, you just create the cost of delay. And we've got a question on the rebate policy, strata company or owner. The, for the New South Wales Energy Saving Rebates, basically it's usually bundled with the LED lighting contractor that you get for your building. So you just go out and get your tender process and they'll, they'll quote you the, the savings from the rebate program in the upfront quote as part of that process. If it's the HEER program inside your own apartment, then it would be the owner that goes out and and contacts an accredited certificate provider. The largest one is EcoVantage. And for downlights, there are government-approved downlights under that scheme from people like Emerald Planner. Just seeing, any more questions? No? Okay, we might have gotten to the end. So Liz, anything else you want to say in closing before we wrap up?
Sorry, Brent.
That's okay. I'll just put in a.
You'll just hear me? No, just in conclusion, just really hope to see everyone along for the following workshop. So I've got a great deal out of this webinar, and I'm really looking forward to the next three. And certainly, if anyone has any questions about apartment programs, please do contact me. Feel free to email or call me, and I'll send out my details later on.
Okay. Thanks so much, Liz, for sponsoring it. Thanks to City of Ride. And we'll let everyone get on with their dinner and their evening. And we hope it's been illuminating. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.